...those two, the bill passes.
Senate Bill 971, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 54.1-2963.2 relating to Lyme disease, disclosure of information to patients.
The junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving that the bill pass and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
First of all, I'd like to thank the senator from Northern Fairfax County who had a great deal to do with this bill and should have been chief co-patron but was not due to my administrative oversight. This is a very important bill to many of us. We have a literal plague of Lyme disease in certain areas of Northern Virginia. What this bill does is it provides some information to patients. We introduced a floor substitute at the behest of the Virginia Medical Society, which was adopted, and I believe there is peace in the valley over that, and I urge you to pass the bill.
Thanks, Senator. The senator from Alexandria, Senator Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the junior senator from Loudon rise for a question?
Will the junior senator from Loudon yield for a question?
I yield.
Senator yields. The senior senator from Alexandria, Senator Evans.
I hope I'm not reading the wrong version of the bill, but it does it still refer to, I must still refer to false positives and negatives, and could those not, no longer be a significant factor after improvements within just a few years?
The junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
I would respond that we are very much hopeful that we will have improvements. Now, the problem that we have right now is that the test that is commonly used for Lyme disease is notoriously unreliable. People will get a tick bite and they will go into their physician because they'll see this sort of trademark bullseye mark on their skin. They go in, and if they go in early, often the blood has not yet developed the antibodies that are necessary for the detection of the disease. That makes this situation rather unique because so many of the test results come back incorrect. Now, once someone has been informed that they don't have Lyme disease based on the test, then they may go on and they may experience symptoms and spend years and years looking for other solutions where the actual problem is Lyme disease. And meanwhile, Lyme disease, while it's relatively treatable early on, as time goes on, it eats away at your joints, it does substantial tissue damage to major organs and things of that sort. Now, we have added a sunset clause of five years because of the uncertainty of the possibility that there may be some advances in the testing. I was told just this morning that there is a vaccine that is being looked at, and of course, that would, you know, that would be nirvana for many people in Northern Virginia if we could come up with a vaccine that would address this problem. But in the meantime, this is what we and the Virginia Medical Society have agreed upon with the five-year sunset so that we, you know, we review it or we terminate it at that time if appropriate.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Evans.
I thank the gentleman.
The junior senator from Norfolk, Senator Northam.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator from Norfolk, Senator.
That's all right, Mr. President. I take it any way I can get it. I would ask, Mr. President, if the junior senator for Loudon would yield for a couple of questions, please.
Will the junior senator from Loudon yield for a question?
I yield.
Senator yields. The senior senator from Norfolk, Senator Northam.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I always enjoy listening to non-physicians talking about medical issues, but he just made a statement that a patient that came in with a history of a tick bite and the rash that we call erythema migrans and started talking about the test. But I would ask the good senator if he would take my word that if that particular patient came in with that history and with that rash that I would treat them and not even bother to do the serology testing.
The junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Mr. President, I would respond that I certainly would accept the gentleman's word that that would be the approach that he would take. It is my understanding that that is not always done, and the National Capitol Lyme Association, which represents about 3,000 people in Virginia, has said that they have problems that occur with this, and we have heard from various victims of Lyme disease that they did go in, that they did get the test, and that sometimes, you know, the treatment did not come about. I have no doubt that the gentleman would provide very good, very good treatment. I don't question that.
Senior senator from Norfolk, Senator Northam.
A follow-up question, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask the good senator, today I heard him say that there was peace in the valley. He also said yesterday that there was peace in the valley, and my interpretation of peace in the valley is that all of the involved parties, all the interested parties, have come together and, at least in our legislative environment here, are in agreement. So I would ask the good senator, is that his impression of what peace in the valley is?
The junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Mr. President, I would respond that the principal opposition that the bill faced was from the Virginia Medical Society, that they approached me after this and they said, "We have great sympathy with this, and we understand that this is a very unique situation. Would you have difficulty if we proposed some changes?" They did make those proposals, and they changed the wording of the bill, and I have reflected their changes precisely without alteration in the substitute. I'm totally happy with that. And so when I say there's peace in the valley, I'm talking about the one organization that did come forward to express misgivings about the legislation.
The senior senator from Norfolk, Senator Northam.
A follow-up question, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Would the senator agree that one of the most vocal opponents of this piece of legislation, i.e. physicians across the Commonwealth and specifically the Medical Society of Virginia, are adamantly opposed to this legislation? Would he, does he understand that, and would he agree with that?
The junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Mr. President, I would say that that would take me by surprise because it would not reflect the discussions that I had with the representative from the Virginia Medical Society when they came forward and proposed the substitute. The comments that I got from them were most sympathetic. They indicated that they understood that this was a unique situation, and by the same token, I acknowledge that I get involved in medical things with great reluctance because I don't like to see them in the code, but they expressed understanding of that, but that they had concern about specific language. And in particular, I note that they have added some language relative to immunity from civil liability for providing this written information. And as one of the staunchest defenders of the doctors from frivolous claims and so forth, I was most happy to see that in there, and so, and I had no indication from them that they had further difficulties.
The senior senator from Norfolk, Senator Northam.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask for a follow-up question.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you. I'd ask the good senator, you know, I sat in the committee meeting and I listened intently to the folks that supported your bill. I believe there were three lawyers, including yourself. There was a doctor of ministry, and there were several patients that had been affected with Lyme disease, but to the best of my recollection, there were no physicians speaking on behalf of your piece of legislation. Is that correct, Mr. President?
The junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Mr. President, I would respond, I believe that the gentleman is correct. We had about 100 people there testifying for, or in support of the bill, and the leadership of the National Capitol Lyme Association were the ones, I could not tell you with certainty that there was not a physician, but I don't recall one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Follow-up question.
Senator has the floor.
And again, I would ask the senator, I did listen to attorneys discuss immunoglobulins, antibodies, serology tests, Western Blot testing, and I would ask the senator, when we do diagnostic studies, just a little bit about biostatistics, we use a term called sensitivity, and I would ask if the senator could explain to the body here what we mean when we talk about the sensitivity of a diagnostic test.
Junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Mr. President, I would respond that I am not a physician, however, I know that the legislation that was drafted was also done in conjunction with a commission that was led, I believe, by Mike Ferris back several years ago and involved medical and laypeople, and it was a governor's commission that was put together to examine this problem, and it is a most vexing problem. This is not something easily addressed by anyone, and that's why I think you'll find that there are those of us who are, you know, the most staunch defenders of the medical profession who simply feel that something has to be done for these people, and this is a modest step, but I think a step forward.
Yes, sir. A follow-up question, Mr. President. I'm sorry, perhaps I didn't make my question clear, but I was asking about sensitivity. And just to explain that, when we talk about sensitivity, if we take a population of patients that we know have a particular disorder or disease, that sensitivity would be our ability to test those, and what percentage of our tests would be positive for that particular disease? And the reason, Mr. President, I ask that question, I have a follow-up question, I would ask, would the senator agree, and he has made the statement that the sensitivity of this particular test is not as good as we'd like it to be, but that there are literally thousands of diagnostic tests that I have at my disposal as a physician. We look at the sensitivity of all those tests, whether it be an X-ray or cardiac cath or an EEG, but I would ask the senator, does he know of any of those thousands of diagnostic tests that we have available that has a sensitivity of 100%?
Junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
I would respond to the president, that, Mr. President, that I doubt that there are any tests, any medical tests, that have a sensitivity of 100%. I say that as a layman, but at the same time, the problem here is not the lack of 100% sensitivity, but as the gentleman has acknowledged, that this is an unusually insensitive test and one that is consequently unreliable.
Mr. President, a follow-up question. If the senator would agree with me that there is no diagnostic test of all the thousands that we have available that has 100% sensitivity, can he imagine the position that he would put me in as a provider, as a physician, if I had to hand a piece of paper to a patient every time that I do a test telling them that the test is not 100% accurate?
The junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
I would, Mr. President, I would respond by saying that if we were being asked to do that with frequency, then I would be in agreement with the gentleman. I would also be voting, as the gentleman seems inclined to vote, because, as I said, I'm very reluctant to intervene in anything of a medical nature. However, this is a problem of such significance and intensity. When I walk door to door, particularly in the Lovitzville area, I will tell you that almost every family that I contacted had a member who was suffering from Lyme disease. It is incredibly widespread, and many of those folks told stories of situations where they had been tested and they had received information that you do not have Lyme disease, and then, based on that, they took no further action. Some of these people are crippled. There was a woman who came, who was wheelchair-bound, who was one of those folks, who had been diagnosed, and she was not someone who was told she had had Lyme disease, and as a consequence, suffered considerably, and this happens. And I recognize not every, not every test is going to be 100%, no test is going to be 100%. This one, I think, is very unique, and I think we've got a problem that so intensely affects Virginia, particularly Northern Virginia, but other areas of Virginia also, that I really believe that taking this modest step of giving this precaution to people, and we're suggesting, if you continue to have symptoms, speak with your physician. We're not saying do this or do that, but just simply be in touch with your physician and also notifying them that, as the gentleman has mentioned, this is not a test that consistently gives us accurate results, and that can be very misleading to the patient. And so, we're simply trying to keep patients from being misled where they will go for many years untreated because they believe that that test was accurate, and we're just giving them that assistance so that they understand that.
Senior senator from Norfolk, Senator Northam.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of questions, and I will try to make them direct, maybe yes and no answers. I know, don't want to carry this on for too long, but would the senator agree that this maneuver or this piece of legislation would increase my cost of overhead and thus increase the cost of health care?
Junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Mr. President, I cannot imagine how this would increase the gentleman's overhead. Every time that I go into a physician's office, I'm making out forms and so forth, and this is, this is a form, I don't know how many words we've got, but it is a very, very small thing. I just can't imagine that this isn't something that could be done without any additional cost.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator from Norfolk, Senator Northam.
A follow-up question. I see a lot of patients, Mr. President, on the eastern shore. They don't speak English. Most of them speak Spanish. Would the gentleman agree that offering this piece of paper to them would be of no use?
Junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Mr. President, I understand what the gentleman is saying. We have people who speak a multitude of languages. I certainly would not discourage any physician from translating the language to accommodate whoever they want. I don't want to impose that, but I certainly would not be opposed to any physician doing that. I don't care what the language is, whether it's Spanish or Portuguese or what. My concern, and I am certainly equally concerned with people who are not native English speakers. I don't want to see anyone suffer needlessly from this disease.
Senior senator from Norfolk, Senator Northam.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the senator agree that it would maybe be a good idea to not let the government intrude on the patient-physician relationship and let me, as a physician, use my discretion how I'm going to communicate with a patient and whether they're going to need a handout or not?
Junior senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Mr. President, I, you know, I have tremendous faith in our physicians. I believe in their ability to do their jobs. I feel like, in this particular area, that this is a measure that would be of assistance, and I think that it is something that we owe to the people in the vast areas of Virginia that are afflicted by this. We, you know, I don't know of another group that I've ever been contacted by that had 3,000 members in the state who are passionately and actively interested in this type of thing. And of course, we have people who suffer from all sorts of things, but in terms of a group that's saying, "Please, please help us so that we will not continue suffering needlessly from this," and particularly, I will tell you, when I look at the incidence charts that, where they have a dot for a place in the state where this occurs, we're, my district is ground zero, and yet I look over the senator from Northern Fairfax, has a very high incidence of it. Out in Frederick County, it's very common. Down in Falkir and Prince William, and then it takes a line, it goes on down into Southern Virginia, and it is the sixth most rapidly growing disease in the nation. Now, I don't think it's sixth just because people are becoming more aware. Of course, that's always a factor with these things, but I really believe that there is a spread of the disease taking place. And I say that as somebody who's a bit skeptical of some of the syndromes and things that come to mind, but I have seen this and I have talked to so many, excuse me, so many people who have confirmed the existence of this, that I just, I have no question in my mind that this is a major health problem and almost a bit of a plague in some of the areas of Virginia where we do need to do something.
Senior senator from Norfolk, Senator Northam.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank the senator for answering the question if I could speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And hopefully, I've been able to make my point to my fellow members of the Senate, and I don't want to give you a lecture on Lyme disease, and by the way, we're very sensitive.
Mr. President. For what purpose does the senator rise?
Would the senator for Norfolk yield for a question quickly?
Will the senior senator from Norfolk yield for a question?
Be glad to, yes.
Senator yields. The senior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Martin.
Is the senator aware that the amendment nature of substitute that has been adopted here on the floor was crafted and presented, brought forward to us by the Medical Society of Virginia for our consideration?
The senior senator from Norfolk, Senator Northam.
I am aware, Mr. President, that the, one of the members, lobbyist for the Medical Society of Virginia, was helping with the amendment that the senator spoke of yesterday, but I will make it quite clear to the body that, aside from that amendment, the Medical Society and physicians, as I said earlier, across the Commonwealth are very much opposed to this piece of legislation.
Senator from Chesterfield, Senator Martin.
Well, Mr. President, further question. And preceding this question, I would tell you that when this bill came to the floor, I had two come to me, including the person you're probably talking about, letting me know that they were crafting it for this purposes and would like my support on it. I'm told it may be otherwise, but given, would you not agree, the question is, would you not agree that throughout 54.1, because the, we legislators are responsible for the health and safety of the public, we set up standards and guidelines for the practice of medicine in a lot of different ways, that some are more intrusive than you might consider this to be, which this is nothing more than saying that on a test result that says, particularly Lyme disease, we're talking about Lyme disease, that you may have taken the test too early so it may not have shown up, so it could be false, just want to make sure, you might want to test again later. That's all it does, okay? Would you not agree that we, as the Virginia legislature, have a responsibility for the health and safety, and through 54.1, do see to that responsibility in a lot of different ways, far more intrusive than what this might be?
Senior senator from Norfolk, Senator Northam.
No, sir. I wouldn't agree enough. I could move on with speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Yes, sir. Just a couple of quick points, and then hopefully we can bring this home, but, you know, just to mention what I was trying to talk about earlier, we are very sensitive as a health care community about Lyme disease. It is a tough problem. It is difficult to diagnose. The serology tests, the Western Blot that I referred to earlier, are often indeterminate. We're aware of that. That's not the point. And yes, we feel sorry and want to do everything that we can to help people that are afflicted by Lyme disease, but just a point I would make that I think you'll be able to remember, the particular pathogen for Lyme disease is Aspirakeet. It is a cousin, I don't know if it's a first cousin or distant cousin, but it is accustomed, accustomed cousin, excuse me, to the same Aspirakeet that causes syphilis, and that is referred to as the great masquerader. That tells you something about how tricky these diseases are to deal with. We're not arguing that. What we are, the point we are trying to make, though, is that there are, as I mentioned earlier, I tried to make the point, that there are thousands of diagnostic tests out there. None of them are perfect, so physicians, providers, don't want to be in the position, I mean, we obviously communicate with our patients, that's part of our job, but we don't want to be in the position where we're mandated to offer information to every patient that we order a test on. I mean, if you think this through, think about all of those tests. If this is the start, where is it next? Let me make a point to, in response to him, I take care of epileptics. People come in with episodes that may be seizures. The yield, the sensitivity of doing an EEG is far less than a Lyme test. That doesn't mean, though, that I don't communicate with that patient and tell them, "You know what? You may still have seizures. We may need to do other tests. We may have to watch this for a while." That's what I'm trained to do, and no, I don't need a bunch of legislators who don't have a background in medicine interfering with my ability to take care of a patient. So I would just make the point, we're sensitive to Lyme disease, but, and we have ways of practicing medicine. Let us practice medicine. Let us use the discretion that we need, how we communicate with our patients, how we treat them. The legislature doesn't need to be doing that, and I would ask the body to vote no against this piece of legislation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Senator. Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak in favor of the bill.
Senator has the floor.
The senator from Loudon has it exactly right. His constituents and my constituents are suffering from what's verging on a plague. They're truly suffering. We have, in my district in Reston, whole families who've been afflicted by this, and the more we kind of tell people, "You get out there and you walk and you run and you go through the woods and you get fit," the more likely they seem to be to get Lyme disease. And part of the reason is that it is a very complicated disease that you can't seem to prevent. prevent. You can wear your high socks, and you can cover up your legs with pants, but it's likely to get you anyway, because it's got a life cycle that involves deer, and it involves mice, and it involves ticks, and nobody can come up with a way to stop this cycle. What people are asking for is information, just for information. And unfortunately, as much as we'd like to believe the doctors are giving them that information, they're not always getting the information they need to make wise decisions. Patients need to know that if they get a negative test, it doesn't necessarily mean they don't have Lyme disease. They should get tested again. And why is that important? Because the treatment is time-sensitive. To be effective, you need to be getting your injections quickly. So this is kind of the exception that proves the rule. We need to get this information to people. There's not much cost to it. It's not a procedure. It's nothing invasive. It's just saying, let the patient know that they should probably be tested again. It's very simple. I certainly hope that you will do it. If Lyme isn't infesting your district yet, it will be soon.
Thanks, Senator. The senior from Louisa, Senator Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, with all due respect to my colleagues, the senior senator from Norfolk, who mentioned, by my count, 14 times, his medical credentials, I want to make a couple There's a sunset provision in this bill, I moved that sunset provision in this bill, because, and I quote myself, "I'm loathe to tell doctors how to do their jobs." But there is a problem. And it's not a problem in the districts of Senator Black and Senator Howell. People are getting sick, and people are dying. I have a nephew named Ian, who, when he was four years old, got the bull's eye rash. He was lucky enough to have the erythema. I'm sorry I'm pronouncing that wrong. I'm not a doctor. And the doctor who he went to see told my sister, "We don't have Lyme disease in Virginia." And when the secondary disorders of Abiesia and Bardanelle took an energetic four-year-old child from the best player in his soccer team to not able to go to the game the next weekend, the reality was brought home to me. Let's not be overly broad about what this bill is about. What this bill is about is about information. What this bill does is it provides patients information that says, "A negative result may not preclude the fact that you might still have Lyme disease. Continue to observe." So that we can help people, so that we can help people. And the doctor's statements are absolutely correct. We trust physicians to be physicians, and the patron of this bill's not one. But he was a soldier. I was a soldier. We took an oath to protect people and defend the Constitution. And as legislators, we take an oath to protect people and defend our constituents. This bill is simply about recognizing that there's a shortcoming in the scientific data at this point, putting in a sunset to remove it, and keeping people like my sister and my nephew from having to go through the indescribable pain that they went through. This is a bill that is rightly considered. It's a good bill, and I ask you personally to please vote in favor of Senator Black's bill.
Senator from Falkir, Senator Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to, in particular, associate my remarks with the senator from Northern Fairfax. And as many of my colleagues here, Loudon, Fairfax, Falkir and Loudon, which I represent, have been ravaged by Lyme disease. And if you do not have it in your communities, you can't imagine the impact that it has. And I understand, or at least it was my impression, having spoken to representatives of the physician community, that their concern had been largely ameliorated by the floor amendment that was introduced. And certainly, I understand that it is important to not have the perfect be the enemy of the good. But there is extraordinary good here in merely communicating somehow. And I would support anything that we could do, public service announcements, education in schools, some effort where people could be, at a minimum, put on notice, because many, many people have been treated for chronic fatigue syndrome, they've been treated for many, many other things, when they were actually dying as a result of complications from Lyme disease. When my son was six, he was diagnosed with Lyme. He had the bull's eye. I tested positive for Lyme. We've all done the antibiotics. All of my dogs have had Lyme disease. One of them almost died. I mean, it is unbelievable. And just communities where I live, every single household has someone who has Lyme disease. And you never have to notice the tick. You never have to know that you've had a bite. Most people have never even seen the tick on their body. And so it is unfortunate that this public health issue has become such an extraordinary political issue in the communities that we represent, but it really has. And I am at a loss for anything to know, to do, or to communicate with my constituents. And in fact, I have had so many people communicate with me as a result of Senator Black introducing his legislation. And in fact, I've had many people communicate with me and urge us not to do anything to water down this sort of communication component of his legislation. And some were not in favor, in fact, of his floor amendment. But I would just urge the body to consider that there is an enormous amount of good that can come from a communication with the public in general about what the risks of Lyme disease include, and that it can, in fact, be fatal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Senator. Senator from Chesterfield, Senator Martin.
President, speaking to Senate Bill 971.
Senator has the floor.
Speaking in support of the measure, and as chairman of the committee, you know, our testimony that came before us was quite compelling. I'm not moved by the emotions of an argument from legislation to legislation, but the argument was quite compelling. The fact is that government's primary responsibility is to protect life, liberty, and property. And in protecting life, we have responsibility for the health and safety of the public. It's the reason why we even license professionals. It's the reason we license them. And this entire title of the code specifically exists for the purposes of regulating health care in the state of Virginia. I referred to this bill earlier as the senator from Loudon's Malmed Relief Act, because, in fact, in my opinion, giving this notice helps to relieve, and you see language even in this bill, that the Medical Society asked we put in the bill to protect them from liability. And so I do not believe that this is overreaching whatsoever. It has not overreached beyond matters that we are, in ways that we have not already done in other areas. And I would urge you to support the bill. Quite a compelling argument, quite a compelling case, and the effects of lives, and what a difference this would make.
Thanks, Senator. The senator from Prince William, Senator Colgan.
Mr. President, I move the pending question.
Senator, there are no other speakers. Senator, as a precautionary measure. The question is, shall the pending question be ordered? All in favor of the motion will record their votes. I, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Eyes 34, no, six.
Eyes 34, no, six. The pending question is ordered. The question is, shall the bill pass? All in favor of the motion will record their votes. I, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Eyes 29, no, 11.
Eyes 29, no, 11. The bill passes.